Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We will now begin the regular meeting of the Indianapolis Public Library Board of Trustees. Ms. Angie Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Biederman.
Present.
Mr. Lane.
Present.
Dr. Matata.
Present.
Dr. Palacio.
Present.
And Ms. Tribble.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. The chair recognizes a quorum. Welcome to this Board of Trustees meetings of the Indianapolis Public Library. I'm Hope Tribble, the board president, and I would like to thank the Garfield Park Branch and staff. They are the featured branch this evening. Garfield Branch does not have a meeting room, so we're meeting here today at the Library Services Center. We will be hearing from the branch manager in a moment. First, I'd like to highlight the African American History Committee's amazing work organizing the Meet the Artist Gala and exhibit, which runs through March 23rd. This NDPL tradition of thirty-six years showcases local African American creative talent. This year, Meet the Artist has garnered fifty positive media stories from local media in the last weeks. The artists were also acknowledged by the Indiana Pacers during halftime on February eighth. Congratulations to the African American History Committee and all the work that you do to help make NDPL a vital, a part of a vibrant Indianapolis. In addition, the month of March at NDPL promises a flurry of significant happenings, including the highly anticipated Marion McFadden Memorial Lecture, featuring acclaimed ballerina and author Misty Copeland. In its forty-fifth year, the McFadden Lecture has featured many of the nation's most ambitious authors, including James Baldwin, one of my favorite, Patricia Cornwell, David McCullough, William Styron, and Khalid Husini, to name a few. Also in the weeks ahead, donors will enjoy the special fundraising event circulating on March sixteenth. Then NDPL will end the month on a high note with the grand opening of the Glendale Branch on March thirtieth. This new public library facility marks the final major construction milestone in our strategic plan, which will conclude at the end of 2024. As we approach the culmination of this strategic plan, we've already embarked on the journey of crafting our next strategic priorities, details of which will be discussed further in the meeting tonight. Now, I'd like to introduce Garfield Park Branch Manager, Ms. Alexandria Oberhaus. She will report on Garfield Park Branch, its librarians and staff, the facility, their community, and the services. Wel- welcome, Ms. Oberhaus. On behalf, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we welcome you and look forward to hearing your branch report.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
I don't do this very often, so if I'm nervous, I apologize.
You'll be great.
All right. So who we are, Garfield Park Branch, as you already know, does not currently have a community room. However, we do have a lot of other items to offer. In terms of staffing, we have one community branch manager, myself, a circulation supervisor, a full-time public service librarian, which we are hiring for the position at this moment, one full-time children's services librarian, a full-time computer assistant, a full-time library assistant, one part-time twenty-four-hour library assistant, one part-time twenty-hour computer assistant, and three hourly pages. In terms of who we serve, I have demographics based on the 2020 census, and we currently serve a population of about thirty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-four individuals. As you can see in your packet, the graph shows a breakdown of the population by age, and the median age being thirty-four point nine years. Continuing down below, we have a description of the racial distribution of the community. As you can see, there is a total of about seventy-seven percent majority of white individuals in this area, followed by additional individuals of the Asian, Black, Hispanic communities. There are approximately thirteen elementary schools and eight high schools located within the community, and these schools are comprised of private charter and public schools. There are approximately sixty-three places of worship in this area, and the percentage of home ownership is approximately fifty-three percent, with a percentage of forty-six and a half percent of the population identified as renters. In terms of how we serve, the adjusted door count for patrons visiting the branch in two thousand twenty-two was an approximately five thousand three hundred and seventy-six individuals coming in and out of the branch per month. This grew significantly in 2023, averaging over seven thousand two hundred and ninety-eight, for a total of about eighty-seven thousand in, in terms of our adjusted door count. The current number of cardholders within the Garfield Park Branch area is five thousand two, um, five thousand twenty-one. Of that total, we have a number of cardholders that are active within the system. That means basically unexpired cardholders and accurate updates to their location as of January twenty twenty-four. And that makes up approximately thirteen percent of the population within this area. So that is very exciting. That is up from about eight percent from last year. Per Collection HQ, our collection contains about thirty-three thousand materials, made up of books, movies, CDs, audiobooks, just to name a few. In 2023, we had a total of ninety-one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine physical materials circulated within the branch for an average of about seven thousand five hundred per month. In January of this year, we already saw physical materials circulate seven thousand four hundred and seventy-one times. So we are definitely on point to continue that trend. One of the biggest parts about the library, Garfield Park, is that we do not have a community room space because we have that space used as our computer lab. So as you can see, we do have an increased number of computer usages, and that continues to grow. Most of our patrons are familiar with utilizing the computers and can complete their work without any in-depth assistance. Popular questions refer to printing, scanning, and locating current websites, correct websites, excuse me. We have continued to have consistent, high-quality programs to draw in new and returning patrons. Program attendance totaled four thousand six hundred and forty-seven individuals, over three hundred and eighty-seven provided in-branch and out-branch programming just for last year. We have, as you can see, a few images that I have prepared as well. In order to start, I wanted to show you guys a little bit of background information. So the small picture here, this is actually of the branch during a Christmas celebration in nineteen thirty-six. So the Shelby Branch first opened on September ninth of nineteen eighteen, and it was located just across the street in what was the Old District School, number thirty-four. And then after a temporary move, the branch reopened its doors to the public on November eighth of nineteen sixty-five, which is its current location. So we have a picture on the top left of what you can see is our call of story and staff members in two thousand and two. Down below, we have someone, and unfortunately, you can't see the full image. There was a child outside and had a sign that says Shelby Branch. In the top right side and the bottom right side, you can see two images that actually reflect the twenty thirteen celebration of the branch opening and then of the, and I'm sorry, now I forget which program that was. But that was in, that was shortly after twenty eleven when the branch was renovated and renamed the Garfield Park Branch. So that is now known, the namesake, as the Green Park in, uh, Green Branch in the Park. In twenty nineteen, the opening of the Red Line was a significant contribution to many of our locations as that allowed for easier transit for many of our patrons. In terms of the patrons that access the location, we do have folks that walk, that use the bus system, drive, and bike. And we do have a large population of folks that we serve that are currently experiencing homelessness. These are just a few pictures that we have of the branch over the last few years that I have been there. So I really do want to highlight the good work that we continue to do, even if our location is smaller in physical size. We continue to have programming. We continue to highlight different events. We have a picture there of a volunteer for our seed library and continue to celebrate our staff members as they continue through retirement, new positions, and other growth opportunities. These pictures are probably, you're thinking, what is this? What I wanted to show you is that we are, since being there, and I began there in fall of twenty twenty-two as interim branch manager, we are trying to make the most of what we have at that location. And we are currently benefiting from some other locations going through renovations. Now, we are updating some furniture pieces based on the availability, also to keep costs down. So hopefully, we can get an expansion in the future. So we have benefited and worked with other branch managers and management at different locations to replace materials that we once had. I also want to point out in the bottom right-hand corner, we have worked with shifting materials. In this particular example, we've actually lowered the shelving to help make items more accessible to our patrons. I am a little bit like shorter than average height for a woman, but hopefully, again, we're just keeping in mind what patrons want to access, making it easier for them to reach, easier for them visually to see what they have going on. So again, not the most exciting images we have, but trying to make the most of what we have with what we have at this time. These are just some statistics. I know I'd already gone over a few different items. If you can see on the left-hand side, we have physical circulations at the Garfield Park Branch. So I actually went back to twenty twenty. As you can see, that large blue line dipped very low when the system was closed due to the COVID pandemic. But if you see, on average, we're actually starting out circulating materials at a higher rate in the beginning of the year than we were even in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. In terms of the adjusted door count on the right-hand side, that is also just another way to see what I was speaking about earlier in terms of having additional counts of people coming in and out of the branch. So COVID was hard, but I think the system as a whole, we're just one example of a location that continues to see people coming into the branches. Now, I, I tend to talk a lot, so I don't know if I'm boring you or if I've not talked enough. But these are just a few images that I chose to really summarize what we have going on right now. So in the top-left corner, we have one of our pages, Zoe Warren. At the bottom-left corner, we have one of our frequent patrons, and that was taken on our photo, um, oh, capturing the photo, uh, photo day in twenty twenty-three, our snapshot day. We have one of our children's librarians in this, in the middle image, one of our regulars reading in the top. We have Ben, one of our volunteers in the top-right corner, as he does serve to help patrons in our computer lab. In the bottom-right-hand corner, we have one of our recent employees that has separated from the library due to a retirement, and she was our adult librarian packing seeds for our seed library. If I have just a few more moments, I wanted to highlight not only where we were, but where we want to go. So in terms of this PowerPoint, you know, addressing some of our history, I did not go into all of our story, but it is ongoing. So we opened in nineteen eighteen. In twenty eleven, we were renamed the Garfield Park Branch, as it was previously called, the Shelby Branch. In twenty nineteen, the Red Line came to our neighborhood, which increased additional patron access to our materials. And the end of twenty twenty, as I previously mentioned, brought an opportunity and a chance for new management. So I began as an interim manager, hired within two weeks of being there, circulation supervisor, and then received the position, and just recently hired another circulation supervisor as of last year, last fall. So overall, we are a newer team in the sense that we're a new, newly-formed team. But we have the experience and we have the access to materials and resources to provide quality programming for our community members. There are a few challenges that we see, one of them being physical space. As you, as you already know, since we are hosting it here, we're trying to make the most of that space, though. And we still continue to provide programming for children, teens, and adults. And in terms of the response from facilities and other management within the system, we are listed as one of the locations to see different improvements with the site assessments that, that will be coming out. So we're looking forward to that. Safety is another concern that we see, as we are a location that has a history of higher incident rates and reports that not only are perhaps more frequent in the past, but I would think to a higher severity as we have responded to individuals who have experienced overdoses and other traumatic injuries. However, I'm very happy to say, working with However, I'm very happy to say, working with the team and the facilities and with Adam Parsons as well and Marcus Kuboto, we are now hiring and should be expecting our newest full-time library security assistant this week at orientation. So that person will be with us on a full-time basis. In terms of patron and staff safety, Sharp's containers have been added to a variety of different locations to pilot that program. We are one of those locations benefiting from that. And additional training has been provided for our staff members as well. So in October of last year, we had a staff meeting and had our, our connect, like, community partners with the Marion County Health Department come out to help teach a training for Narcan. So we will also benefit from being, and I hope, I hope this is okay to say, I don't, sorry, Adam, piloting a Narcan locks, so an outdoor Narcan administration system for the community. And I apologize, I should have double-checked my facts to make sure everyone was aware of that as well. So all in all, I think our last challenge, being the newness of our team, being newly-formed, it's a challenge, but it's an opportunity as well. It's an opportunity to see what have we tried before and, for whatever reason, didn't have the chance to give it a try. What ideas do we have from new staff members? Not only new to the system, but have experience at other locations that can come in saying, hey, we tried this here, what do you think about trying it, trying it at Garfield Park? So we definitely want to balance and continue the legacy of the branch while also providing the opportunity for growth and meeting the expectations of the community. So we continue to do that work. And yeah, every day that my staff show up, it's another day that, that they're there for the patrons, for themselves, and for me, honestly, another, can swallow our manager as well. So thank you for your time. Again, I, I can speak all day about these things, so.
Well, thank you for the report. Are there questions for Ms. Oberhaus?
I, I wanted to ask a question. In our social work pamphlet and information, it talks about housing and homelessness. And you mentioned it as a challenge as well. How are you working with our social worker and moving forward some of the issues there? It was pointed out in the social work package, and we'll get that presentation a little bit later. But how is that moving along? That's one question. And then I had a different question where you were discussing this furniture and the kinds of furniture. I thought I recognized a bench from, from Glendale. Wasn't sure if that's what that bench was. Was that one of the benches from Glendale?
Yes, I believe it was.
I thought so. I think that looks like a bench, one of the ones on the outside when you first go in. What type of steps are you taking toward furnishings and that type of thing, other than what's being recycled, so to speak?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So I'll touch on the first question about social workers and how we're working with Yana right now. So Yana began working with the staff at Garfield Park before I arrived at the branch. So she did have hours that she was attending and speaking with our community members. That has since changed, obviously, over time, as she has other items and, and a larger presence at other branches as well. So we have some local organizations that we partner with, a few of them being Horizon House. We have another amazing team. So we have two folks that come on a regular basis on Wednesdays. One of them is a member of the Pedago Clinic off of Washington Street, which is right next to Horizon House. Another member who has currently changed positions, a part of Tear Down the Walls Ministry and Salvation Army. Not to mention, we have recently worked closer with an organization called SOAR, S-O-A-R. So they actually work with the homeless population in Indianapolis, assisting with pet needs. So if you're familiar with the winter contingency for Indianapolis and the efforts being done to help house individuals in extremely cold weather, this organization, for example, will house those pets for those owners to make sure they can get the care that they need during that severe weather time. Not to mention, we still have an ongoing relationship with Yana. And so we do have patron referral forms. Many of our patrons will reach out. Yana and her team, any of her interns have been extremely responsive and are so timely with the responses. So I greatly appreciate that and see her as a huge benefit to, to the library. But I, I'm so grateful for those local partnerships as well. So for your second question, in terms of furniture, I will say, I'm gonna call out Adam again. So I was, I believe I was still in an interim role at this time. I don't know if I had received the position quite yet. I did work with Adam and Robert Morrison to identify the items within the branch that could be, you know, either utilized at a different location or, for example, due to space, we had a lot of materials in our mechanical room that we could not accommodate. So I was very grateful to work with them and sort of identify what we could have, what we could not have. And one of the items that we benefited from was the purchase of two display mobile carts. So we do have two new wooden Demco carts that are used to highlight parts of the collection. As you can see, many of our collection is against the wall. We did not have a lot of, you know, open force, floor space or opportunity for that retail space to highlight the collection. So I greatly am, you know, greatly appreciate that initiative and the work that they did to make that happen for us. On a, on a sad note, as CDs continue to decline, we did have six different CD display cases. Those are now being used since we cannot house them, you know, long-term, two of which have been moved to another location just recently, Irvington. That has also opened up some of our space and made it a good opportunity to see what we want to occupy that space. We will also benefit from two of our comfort chairs from the Glendale Branch, as we do not have many comfort chair opportunities.
Thank you so very much for sharing.
And hopefully, we can get some more of that lower bookshelf from Glendale as well, because they've got some other ones. Greg, I know, is probably thinking about what kinds of things can be used from Glendale along with Adam.
And I'll just say, I, I have not asked for any additional, like, new furniture. I just appreciate the opportunity. It might not be new to us, but it's a new chance to upgrade something. The whole entire team, anytime we go through renovations, always reaches out to say, hey, we have this material. Is this something that could be of use to you? And I think that's just good communication and wanting to support other locations as well.
You did great. Thank you, Ms. Oberhaus.
Thank you. Alex, you had a different name the last time I saw you, and that's why I was a little disoriented. I was like, that's not her name.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. I want to keep us moving. Hopefully, we'll get out to see the branch even without a conference room. I think it would be great. I'm gonna make an effort to get there just to spend some time and see the branch itself and the history that's there, so.
Yeah, we would actually, we would, we would absolutely welcome anyone who had the chance to come. You know our hours, so we'll see you there.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. We're next going to have a presentation from Ms. Yana McGraw, who is the N D P L social worker. This was, we get periodic updates, but this was especially requested in one of our recent meetings. So we're happy to have you here along with.
Marzegi, this is my last intern for the year.
Hi. And what is your name?
Marzegi Vasquez.
Very nice to meet you, Ms. Vasquez, and welcome to both of you. Please go ahead.
Good evening. I'm here this evening to provide a social work program update. This evening, I will talk with you about, do I have to? This evening, I will talk with you about the branches that have been served by the social work department, the number of patrons served since two thousand and twenty-one. Update you on the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three Resource Fair. Changes for the upcoming twenty twenty, twenty-four Resource Fair. The twenty twenty, twenty-four Social Worker Initiatives, our current intern will provide an update and will conclude, and then I will conclude with providing information on the twenty twenty-four Social Work Program Evaluation. Followed by any questions, comments, or concerns from you all. Here is a snapshot of the branches that have been served since I've came in twenty twenty-one. We've served ten branches, and of that, we've had one thousand seven hundred and twenty-one interactions, either by email, phone, or face-to-face. Branches served were central, the highest branches served were Central, Hoville, and West Indianapolis. From twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three, the social work and intern students have connected with patrons for various needs. But the highest needs have been basic needs such as food, hygiene, and clothing, document assistance with birth certificates, social security cards, licenses, employment, housing, and being unhoused, transportation, and phone. This year, I'm happy to announce that Central did add a courtesy phone for patrons to use that's outside the social work office. So if someone needs to make a call, they're able to do that. And we are not able, we're not sending them to Horizon House, which is like two miles away, if they have immediate need. You can see from the pie chart that thirty percent of our time is addressing housing, twenty-two percent has been on health, and eight percent of our time is addressing basic needs and connecting to community resources. In twenty twenty-two, as Chair of the Social Service Action Committee, I led this committee to put on the inaugural Community Resource Fair, where the first year, we had forty-one vendors participate and along with two hundred participants. In twenty twenty-three, we saw an increase in these numbers, where we went from eight hundred and eighteen participants and sixty-one vendors. That's a three hundred and nine percent increase from twenty twenty-two, and we're really proud of that. This year, I did step down as a chair, and I'm looking forward to our co-chairs, Brianna Barnes and Erica Irish, making the fair bigger and better. I've expressed to many that the Resource Fair is my baby, and I'm looking for nothing but good things for twenty twenty-four. Community partners are already asking me for information for this year's fair, and I'm happy to report tonight that we will be adding three additional fairs to take place in twenty twenty-four. Hoville, Warren, and a mid-regional branch will be chosen either between Southport, West Perry, or Beach Grove. The focus is to bring the resources within those regions into the library. The final Resource Fair will be in November at Central. Twenty twenty-four has been a busy year. We continue to have our Monday tabling with over fifteen community partners that continue to come in and provide connection to service for our patrons. Last year, LSAs were trained in mental health first aid. This year, we will expand that to our PICCs and our branch managers. And last week, our children's librarians received a virtual training on adverse childhood experience. This training provided information on the importance of knowing the individual's childhood experience and how that can impact an individual and how they react. This assessment is a set of ten questions based on any individual's childhood experience from birth to age eighteen. The questions are based on stressful events occurring during the childhood, including domestic violence, parental abandonment through separation or divorce, or a parent with a mental health condition or being a victim of abuse. I continue to build partnerships with community partners. Nomad Alliance comes to Central twice a month and connects with our unhoused patrons. The CLCR team is the mayor's initiative to respond to a mental health crisis with a clinician-led team and peer support. We are exploring how they can have more of a presence at Central. Aspire has a mobile crisis van that comes to Central twice a week outside to connect patrons to testing, mental health, and other community resource. Our city's professional industry outreach team continues to come to support Central, Garfield Park, and other branches in the system to provide support and, and connect patrons to resources. I'm currently meeting with Indiana Wesleyan Mobile Career Lab to see how they can support and connect with patrons who require more attention to navigate housing, employment, education, mental health. More to come as we just started meeting to discuss how we can collab. Coffee and Conversations was started last year and will return this year with four sessions put on by the Social Work Department. And the first one is tomorrow, February twenty-sixth, from ten-thirty till twelve-thirty. And the topic is, "You Are Not Alone." This is for staff and patrons to learn more about resources and recovery from substance abuse. Other committees have joined Coffee and Conversations this year. And the Latine Committee will, Committee will host a session on navigating the stigma of mental health in the Latine community. Another topic this year is what LGBTQ plus allies need to know. This will be hosted by the LGBTQ Committee. In May, the African-American History Committee will be doing a topic on mental health and the effects of biopic population. Supporting homeschool students will be hosted by the Homeschool Committee. A discussion will be held in August on natural hair, and the Dice Committee will do a discussion on what, what we all can do to combat human trafficking and exploitation. We will round the year off with Coffee and Conversation on identifying resources for immigrants and benefits of staff belonging, a conversation between employee support, but, but put on by the Staff Association. I will now turn it to Marzegi, our B S W intern from I U P I, who will share with you her programs for this semester.
Hello. Hi. It's so great to meet you all. Yes, as Yana mentioned, I am a senior at I U P I, and I am a social work intern. So I've been interning at the library, specifically the Central location, since August. So I have been working on events. It takes time to get acclimated to everything that's library, but meanwhile, I have worked with meeting with specifically Sakura, and we talked about finding a way to try to connect the Spanish-speaking community to the library because there are a lot of resources and a lot of things that the people can use at the library. So what I have been working on is I have some info nights coming up in March. One is March fifth, March nineteenth, and March twenty-sixth. One of them will be at Hoville, and the other two will be at the Central Library. So one of these info nights at Hoville will be about Starfish Initiative, which is a college success program. And then the other one that we're having on the nineteenth is I'm having someone who is a licensed healthcare navigator for Indiana come in and kind of explain like what that looks like and what enrollment looks like. And then the final night, I will be having someone come in from Starfish Initiative and Twenty First Century to explain like more, give more information and explain the enrollment process. So all of these are in Spanish, and the hope is that people will come and then we'll have a table full of other resources that the library offers for this community. And then the other thing that I have been working on is like an intern manual. So a lot of times, like me, you come to the library and you don't know what all is happening. So I have been working on kind of like making a list of things that people should know, that the interns should know, all the resources in the community so that the intern can, can come, like, come to know everything that they need to know. So, yeah, and I also have some office hours, and so that's what I've been doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Marzegi, for that update. Interns have been a valuable resource to this program and have produced some great programs, processes, trainees, community connections, and data analysis. We will be able to pause on interns until our program evaluation has been completed, and I'm gonna talk about that in a little bit. When I started at N D P L in twenty twenty-one, I was given a long job description, some articles on social work in libraries, the needs assessment that was done for my position, and told to do what I wanted with the program. And that's what I did. I provided updates and made community connections. My list could go on and on. I want you to know that this has not been easy. And I would be lying if I did not share that with you here tonight. This system hired a social worker without any guidance, direction, or support. When I was told that we were approved for another social worker, I was excited but immediately became concerned about bringing another person on without any structure or clear direction. My position has not been integrated into this system. And I knew that bringing someone else in right away was not the right thing to do. I asked that we slow down things down and do a program evaluation with recommendations on how to move forward. Thankfully, I was listened to. And on February 5th, 2024, a week-long program evaluation was conducted by Dr. Beth Waller. She spent a week talking with staff, community partners, past and current interns. The goal is to see what we have to do, what we have done well, identify the challenges, what community and staff expectations were for this role, and recommend needed improvements along with a clear path forward. I asked for this evaluation. And I am looking forward to learning the good, the bad, and the ugly as we approach Social Work Month on March 1st. I am reminded the importance of being trauma-informed. I have a trauma-informed lens in approaching my work and practice, and look forward to helping this system move forward being trauma-informed and address the needs of staff and patrons. Thank you for your time this evening. Do you have any questions, comments, or concerns?
First, let me say thank you. Thank you for your courage. Thank you for your perseverance. And thank you for your innovation. The idea of being given all the information and just kind of having the ability to do anything is almost like inviting someone to boil the ocean. And congratulations for doing that. I think that I also really appreciate your candor and am looking forward to hearing the recommendations and the outcome of the evaluation. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Are there questions?
I just want to say thank you for this amazing presentation. It was very enlightening. And, you know, I can really tell that you care about the library and your patrons in the city because your emotions really did come through tonight. So thank you for that, and thank you for the service that you provide for our city. My question is, you all are trained in de-escalation techniques, right?
Not, that comes with practice. And where you do different jobs. Like, I would not expect Marsegui to go and de-escalate a situation as a student. So it depends on your training.
Have you had to de-escalate situations while working in the library?
Yes, but often, by the time I'm called, it's gone too far. It's beyond my scope of practice and what I can and cannot do. I prefer to be called when the behaviors are starting because I do know some of the patrons in the library. I'll give an example. Last week, I was at the third floor where the DVDs were and was faxing something for a patron. And security came up, and there is a patron that was sleeping, an unknown patron that I known. And I had to stop them because the approach would have set this individual off. This person has not had his mental health shot in over a year when I was called from Kentucky to verify that he was from Indianapolis. So it's how you approach individuals, and you have to have that trauma-informed lens and approach. And that is going to take this organization to walk the walk and do the work to be trauma-informed. It's about everyone getting home safe, staff and patrons. And knowing that individuals come into the library with a lot of trauma. Unknown trauma.
Thank you for that. And my final question is, do you provide trainings for staff and the security team on trauma-informed techniques that you?
No, I have not. But I did do a training a couple of weeks ago with the Walker Team on, and we talked about mental health, the different mental health diagnoses, about being trauma-informed. And it's about not what's wrong with you, what's happened to you. We have to start changing our language and our approach to undiagnosed mental health, untreated mental health, substance abuse. And these individuals are part of our community. I have told staff in the past that we are in their backyard. We have two permanent supportive housing units across from Central. We have Volunteers of America. We have a recovery house just down the street. We have two shelters within the community. We are in their community. They are our patrons, and we have to start talking and interacting with them like anyone else. And that's a trauma-informed approach, and that's my lens. I came into this job with that lens, and I will continue to the day I leave.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So thanks for all you do. This is very important. Besides the evaluation that you requested, what else do you see is? It sounds like trauma-informed is a priority, but what else do you see is a need?
We need more of me, not only at Central, but our system. I give hands off for librarians because they did not go to school to do what I do. And they are tasked with a lot of things that are hard. And I know they're hard things. So more of me, more support to support staff, staff training, not staff training on a Zoom where there's no interaction. We have to get back to that face-to-face, physical touch, where it's just not a checkbox off the list, where we're actually taking away the learning things to apply to do the job. I want everyone to get home safe every day. I want everyone in the system.
To get home safe. Yeah, thanks for doing that.
I know we're kind of a leader in this, right? What do you know about social work at other library systems?
Are we the only ones? No. There's a lot of social workers in libraries in the crisis in the entire country. There is a website called Whole Person Librarianship, and that's where I got all my knowledge from. Like, I literally, and I found that website in an article that I was giving. So I did my research. I count on that Whole Person Librarianship. I meet with a group of social workers every other week that work in the library, and they have the same things that we have at NDPL. They're happening across the country. But, for example, Kansas City has five social workers in eight branches. I am one social worker in 20-plus.
What other resources do they have?
I always say, library social workers are the resource connector. We are not the resource. We are to build that community partnership, and that's key. And I think that's what I'm trying to do, is to build those community partners, have those community partners come in because unfortunately, people get stuck, and they go, they get lost through the cracks in the system. People come in and they give up hope. They lose hope because no one's coming to save them. And we all, unfortunately, people want them to be safe. People want someone to come and save them. And so that's important, that we continue to make those connections to community partners. We have that trauma-informed lens, and that we treat our patrons like they are our patrons. They are important. They matter. Unfortunately, some people come in with a whole lot of baggage. And I'm not saying staff need to get beat up by people, but we need to at least say hello and acknowledge people.
So the biggest, I guess, the most critical resource would be more social workers?
Social work, peer support. I really want to wait and see what Dr. Waller. This is her work. She just wrote a book that I just bought on libraries. I really would want to hear what her recommendation says. She has done, she has, we have paid for her to do the work. And I would love to hear her recommendations on how to move forward. And I trust her recommendations because this is her work where she is valued in.
Great. I look forward to it.
One question. Thank you so much for everything you do. I was looking over the numbers for each year, and, you know, big uptrend. You know, you getting started and established. I noticed that in Central, obviously, there's the most numbers. And is that mostly a product of that's where you are most days? Or is that a product of just that's the place of most need?
Me and interns. I've had over 15 interns since I, we started interns in 2022.
Gotcha. And so I imagine if we had more people stationed in more places, we'd probably see all these numbers increase substantially.
There's, I think there's a lot of missed numbers. I think sometimes the students struggle with the technology. I think there's some under-reporting. I think it's more than that. But hopefully, with the moving towards having access to HMS, that we'll see more and we'll be able to pull more data and demographics.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Kate, this will be our last question.
Just a quick one. Marsegui, what have you learned through this experience? It's been like you think you would not learn in school?
A lot. I think that I, Yana is an amazing teacher. She really has taught me like a lot about social work. In social work, you have to set your boundaries, but you also have to advocate for people. And she has really taught me that. Going into my senior year, I was like, I want to learn what everyday social work is like because we sit in a classroom and I don't know what it is until you do it. And this has really opened my eyes to how social work can impact one person, but also at a community level and like at a state level. In social work, we have something called micro, meso, and macro work. And at the library, I feel like I've learned all three. I have learned, like, if someone were to come in and say, I need help with this, this, and this, I'm like, great, I can connect you to all these resources. But like, it has been an amazing learning experience. I am very privileged to have this experience, but I am even more privileged to have an amazing teacher like Yana.
Thank you.
Just before you move on real quick, I just want to say thank you for all your work. It's truly appreciated, the work that you do with the patrons and the staff. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm not going anywhere yet, guys.
Good.
I'm here for the long run.
Awesome. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Great report. Appreciate it. We are going to move on with public comment. And Ms. Gilbert?
No, we haven't.
There's no public comment? Great. That's just about right on schedule. So we'll move forward with the approval of minutes. We'll start with the executive session from January 20th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the executive session from January 20th, 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The minutes have been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Peterman?
Approved.
Mr. Lane?
Approved.
Dr. Martada?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
And Ms. Trivell?
Approved.
Thank you.
The motion carries. We'll move on to the regular meeting of January 22nd, 2024. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The minutes have been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Peterman?
Approved.
Mr. Lane?
Approved.
Dr. Martada?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
And Ms. Trivell?
Approved. The motion carries. Moving forward, the executive session from February 2nd. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the executive session from February 2nd, 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The minutes have been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Peterman?
Approved.
Mr. Lane?
Approved.
Dr. Martada?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
And Ms. Trivell?
Approved. The motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. And I believe, well, we'll start with the Finance Committee. I think that's actually the only committee report that we have tonight, so. Ms. Rankin and Ms. Campbell, please come forward.
Good evening, President Trump and Board of Trustees.
Good evening.
Today, Mary and I will review January 2024 Treasury Report. This is the first month of the fiscal year, so we don't have a whole lot to go over, but we do have some transactions to review. So the revenue for 2024 Operating Fund. Of course, the property taxes, we haven't received any because we typically receive it second and the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. The Intergovernmental Fund, we received E-rate in our COED and LOED. So we're right at fiscal, right at our budget. And then for charges for services, public printing and cafe revenue makes up the great portion of the revenue received in this Character III. And also miscellaneous revenue. We have received interest revenue of a total of $112,397. And with Hoosier Fund and Trust Indiana still holding their interest rate. At this time, total for this year, for the month, we received $643,833. Eight hundred thirty-eight. I need to clean my contacts. Eight hundred thirty-eight dollars. That is about 1%. And typically, at this year, we should have received about 8%, but this is normal again for the library. On this slide, you will see the revenue by month and also by year-to-date. The blue slide is the 2024, the blue slope is the 2024. The orange slope is the 2023. The gray is the monthly budget. And as you can see, the blue is right up under the gray slope, which is showing that we have received less than our monthly budget. As well as the, on your right side is the year-to-date. And this is just another way of reviewing our revenue compared to the year-to-date budget. Any questions in regards to the graphs? Now, Mary will review the expenditures.
On the expenditure side for the Operating Fund, personal services and benefits are 2% less than the monthly budget, so that's favorable. Supplies are slightly over the monthly budget due to facility office supplies. Other services and charges are under budget due to legal invoices weren't processed yet in January. But cleaning services is over monthly budget just because we believe there's quarterly work that they got done. So it was an extra expense that was planned for, though. It's just for the quarter versus the month. Capital outlay is consistent with last year. So overall, we've spent 6% of the budget for the month of January. And here it is graphically, showing the blue is January 2024 versus where it was a year ago and the budget for the month by the different categories. And then on the right's year-to-date. So that's our full budget, so. We're just getting started for the year.
And here, you'll see a five-year review for the month of January. So if you wanted to compare the revenue to the expenditures, you'll see that it's been consistent with the revenue. And for the 2020 expenditure, there was a lot. And, um, for the two thousand twenty, um, expenditure, there was a little higher, but however, it has decreased and stayed flat. And for the updates for the accounting finance department, um, on January the thirtieth, I did a presentation of our, our year-to-date investment report for the Board of Finance. Um, that went well and currently we're working on the annual financial report that's due into Gateway the end of this month. And we're currently in our two thousand twenty-three audit. And we're going to start our twenty twenty-five budget season in the next month. So right now, we're kind of busy. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
Yeah, how do you, how do you get those slide transitions?
I was just playing around with it.
Okay. If there, um, is there a motion to accept the report of the Treasurer for January twenty twenty-four for filing for audit?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call to accept the report of the Treasurer.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Mr. Lane.
Approved.
Dr. Martada.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
And Ms. Trivel.
Approved. The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening and thank you for your report. So I believe, um, in terms of our other two committees, the Diversity Policy and Human Resources Committee and the Facilities Committee, there are no reports.
No reports.
So we'll move on to the Library Foundation update.
All right. Uh, February twenty twenty-four updates. Um, the big, big news is on March sixteenth, uh, is the Circulate event, uh, at the Central Library. It is going to be awesome. Uh, we've heard a lot about it. So, uh, go to libraryfoundation.org/circulate and get tickets. I will be looking for all of you there. Uh, and I will take attendance as well. Um, I'll have Ms. Gilbert call the roll and we will make sure everybody's there. Um, uh, in addition to that, all trustees should have received an email invitation to the McFadden Lecture Reception on March twentieth with Misty Copeland. We encourage you to attend, uh, the event. It's an opportunity to engage with donors and meet Ms. Copeland ahead of the lecture. So great stuff. We had a hundred and seventeen donors make gifts last month. Um, here are the top corporate and foundation donors, Blue and Company, Indiana Education Savings Authority, Indigo Foundation, Live Nation, uh, the, uh, illustrious law firm of Manningley, Burke, Cohen and Beederman, uh, Ritz Charles Inc. and Stents Management, uh, Company, Inc. Um, and then last month, or this month, uh, the foundation gave a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the library. Um, there's some major initiatives or bunny bags, Fall Fest, Pause to Read and the Summer Reading Program. That concludes the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beederman. We'll move on. Oh, and I will be there. I, I think this will be my third year in a row. I'm looking forward to it. Circulation is what I'm talking about.
Circulate.
Circulate.
We have, we have circulation all the time.
Right.
But circulate.
We're going to circulate.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to the CEO report, Mr. Gregory Hill, CEO, to give the report.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Board President. Um, before you, it's Resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-four, which is the Resolution Regarding Finances, uh, Travel, yeah, which occurs between each and every board meeting. Uh, the resolution is in its typical format and I would just ask for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution eleven, twenty twenty-four regarding finance, personnel and travel?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The resolution has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call to approve Resolution eleven, twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Mr. Lane.
Approved.
Dr. Martada.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
And Ms. Trivel.
Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion carries. Mr. Hill?
Okay, thank you. I'll be giving a, a brief presentation on selected items from your full board report. Uh, the presentation will cover PDA and adult juvenile programs, the African-American History Committee, Meet the Artists, uh, branch programs, Star Award winners, uh, and the results from last year portion, physical circulation, and an update on quarter one goals and added priorities. And then a brief, uh, update on the Digital Projects Initiative from the Digital Projects Team. The first program I want to talk about here is the, uh, Family Concert Series. In January, we featured the Teddy Bear Concert Series at Central Library. Uh, it featured the Indianapolis Symphony Orchestra. It also featured about an hour of orchestra music, storytelling and movement for the audience. It's one of the, um, one of the bigger programs, uh, with the Family Concert Series. Uh, one thousand books for kindergarten. It's a simple program that encourages pa, parents and guardians to read a thousand books, uh, before the child, before they start kindergarten. Participants receive incentives as part of the program. Progress is tracked and after completion, the child receives a one thousand books crown. In two thousand twenty-three, we had eighteen hundred and forty-two participants. Adult programs, the Seed Library. Uh, the Seed Library again is one of the bigger programs for the adults. Uh, we're gearing to approach the spring season, uh, and preparations are underway. In January, we had volunteers and branch staff. They spent approximately thirty hours packing seeds. Last year, about sixty-seven thousand packets went out into the community. There, we had twenty-six programs that was directly related to the Seed Library with total attendance of three hundred and forty-eight participants. Topics included plantable or platable paper, plantable paper, cover crops, ask a gardener such as tomatoes, container, spa, space gardening and more. Eighteen branches participated in the Seed Library programs. The African-American History Committee. Uh, we just celebrated the thirty-six Meet the Artists. We had several media events and, uh, the Board President covered some of this in her opening remarks. Uh, we mentioned the, the Pacers game where they, uh, some of the artists had a chance to go down to, to the court and, uh, they put up on the jumbo screen the library's logo and they talked about the program. So that was very good media. We also had, uh, web-based media, uh, Nuvo, Indy Today and the Di, and the Daily Journal. They had features on this, uh, on Meet the Artists. On TV, we had W T H R, Wish TV eight, Indy Now Daybreak and Fox fifty-nine Indy Now. And in print, we had Indy Star, the Indianapolis Recorder and Weekly View, which is an Eastside Community Newspaper. Uh, also Lawrence Mayor, Mrs. Deborah Whitfield was present and she participated in the fashion show, actually. Uh, and she gave a few remarks, uh, at that time as well. So it was really great to be able to see her participate in the program. Branch programming. At East Washington, they had multiple programs in January. They had four outreach storytimes. They had a graphic novel book club session. And then they hosted one of our partners, Step Up for HIV and Hep C Testing. They also had a Coalition for Homeless Intervention, CHIP, point in, point in time unhoused person count. At the Warren Branch, they highlighted partnerships with the Warren Township Schools, specifically Lakeside Elementary and the Warren Online Academy. This partnership impacted a hundred and twenty-five second grade students. And then also they hosted an I Re session for Lakeside Elementary Parents at the Warren Branch. Spade Park, the Kid Library and Book Display, I wanted to highlight that neighborhood kids are encouraged to participate. Uh, Spade Park Kids is responsible for creating a book display with, uh, Spade Park Librarian, Nell German. Uh, I wanted to say thank you to all the branches who submitted, uh, program information, including Glendale, Southport and the Info Zone. Next, I want to talk about, um, the Staff Recognition Program. Uh, the Star Awards is a peer recognition program and our saying is that every nomination is a victory. It encourages all staff to recognize others' work. This program gives us the chance to spotlight our exceptional staff and acknowledge their hard work and dedication. Submission categories, there are six submission categories. They are Patron Services, Peer Support, Community Involvement, Team Excellence, Page Excellence and other duties as assigned. For December, I'd like to just read the names here. Patron Services was Gibson Shabel at Lawrence. Peer Support, Alexis Hunt from Fort Bend. Community Involvement is Masada Sparrow from Martin Del Brightwood. Other duties assigned, Leah Rosewood from College. Volunteers and Partnerships was Lynn Watson. She volunteers at Fort Bend and Lawrence. And then Team Excellent was DePage's from Warren. So congratulations. And then just to bring it up to date, I'll do January here real quickly. We had Patron Services was Caitlin Rayber from West Perry. Peer Support Savannah Montoya from I T. Community Involvement Alexis Sims Barnes from Central. Page Excellence was DePage Team from Central Library. And Team Excellence was Cataloging and Processing from CMSA. So congratulations to all those. The next thing I want to cover quickly is, uh, because our Strategic Planning and Assessment Officer will cover some of the circulation in her report as well. So our physical circulation, if you look at the first and second quarters, uh, two thousand twenty-three, pretty much out ahead in both of those quarters. But you see when we go to quarters three and quarter four, um, there was a little drop. Mackenzie and I have been just trying to take a look and see, you know, what that, what causes that. But that was the same with the door count that I presented last month. Uh, the first two quarters seemed like, you know, it's, it's a big leap and then for quarters three and four, it kind of slows down. So, uh, just wanted to show that. The next thing is the quarter update. Strategic planning, I will just leave that for Mackenzie. She will give a brief update on that. But that was one of our quarter one, uh, priorities. The other one was the climate improvement. This is a follow-up that's scheduled to commence on March the eleventh. And we are continuing to use the strategies that was in the, um, uh, the report that I gave on December eighteenth, um, such as being visible, the leadership being visible. We are continuing to have our liaison visits. Uh, our leadership team meetings are still being held twice a month in the branch. The Area Resource Managers Meeting in the branch as well. And then our next town hall is scheduled for March the twentieth. Uh, staff engagement. We recently sent out an email to all staff just letting them know that we were going to be engaging them in all different types of different engagement opportunities. One of those was D E I and access training surveys, which was suggested, uh, by the DICE Committee. So Kim Muers, our D E I Officer, uh, has sent out, uh, a survey to try to find, um, out what staff would like, you know, that something that would be supportive and impactful, uh, to our D E I trainings. Also, we have a Library of Things Survey and that entails a collection of non-media items for possible circulation. It's something that the staff and our patrons, uh, thought would be a good idea. So we're just going to do a survey to find out what items that would include as part of that if we decide to move forward with that. Uh, we had a staff engagement survey that was completed. And, uh, our Strategic Planning and Assessment Officer, Mary Ann McKenzie, uh, did a really great job of putting together, uh, a dashboard for that, which we will share in a all-staff newsletter that will be going out here shortly. And next is some added priorities. Uh, the door counter, um, so last month, or this month, actually, I think we started implementing door counters. Um, so far, we have twenty-four completed. We have seven installed, just waiting for them to be calibrated. We have seven that are waiting installation. And then the last two, the Norr Pike, we're just going to wait till the renovation before those are installed, obviously. And that may seem like that's more than twenty-five, which it is. Uh, some locations have two entrances. Martin Del Brightwood, uh, for one has two entrances and exits. And the C B L C, there's four different ways to get in there. So we want to make sure that, uh, everyone is counted in all the spaces. Uh, most of the outstanding locations should be completed by the end of the week. And then next is the Customer Service Satisfaction Survey. We are working on putting that together. This will be a survey that will be at the point of service, uh, mostly, uh, self-checkout at this point. So when a patron, uh, goes using self-checkout, they'll be able to, um, scan a Q R code that will be on their receipt and they can give us feedback. There will also be posters up in the branches that will have Q R codes for people who may use a community room or something else. They can scan that and they can do surveys as well. So thank you to I T and, uh, Mary Ann McKenzie for working on getting that together. And hopefully, uh, that will be in place by, uh, the end of March. And this is, these are some of the things that we haven't done. And, and I don't recall that we've ever done it, these type of surveys for, to find out what patrons think about our service. Uh, mostly it'll deal with the cleanliness of the building and then customer service. And then we're still, uh, figuring out what we're going to do with those results when we get them, but we will do something and to make sure that, um, we take care of the patrons. And next on the list is the, um, Glendale Grand Opening. The last day of service was Saturday. Uh, staff, I believe, moved into the building today. Everything is on schedule. And as the Board President mentioned in her opening, we are scheduled to open, uh, March thirtieth. Uh, Communications Team is working on getting the publicity together for that. And so that should be forthcoming. Uh, staff opportunities. We talked about the Innovate Conference, I L F Youth Services Conference and the Innovator Users Group Conference in March. Uh, I think we have eight staff that signed up for that. And then lastly, uh, psychological safety training. We had, uh, that training this past Thursday at the Systems Managers Meeting. So all the systems managers were able to attend that meeting. We had two sessions. So so far, the leadership team and all systems managers have had that training. And then the board will be getting that training as well. I also sent, uh, out an email to all the systems managers and staff letting them know that, uh, we are committed to psychological safety and, uh, making sure that everybody gets trained. We make this a place that everybody feels, uh, supported. And then lastly is the, uh, Digital Projects Team. Yesterday, uh, I was invited to the Oasis of Hope Baptist Church at seventeen-one East Twenty-Fifth Street. Uh, the Digital Projects Team, uh, did a web, a website for digital projects for them. They scanned, uh, all different types of, uh, uh, items for the church. Uh, I want to thank Beth Van Allen, that she was our former editor-in-chief. She opened up the program. Uh, also Natasha Hollenback, Manager of Digital Projects, and Katie Farmer. They gave a great presentation on how to access the website and all the different things that they've done. They did oral histories. Uh, they did a really, a lot of good stuff. Uh, Oasis of Hope Baptist Church was very appreciative, uh, gave a big shout-out to the library. Uh, there was about two hundred people in attendance and then I gave some remarks at the end. So, uh, thank you, Digital Projects. You guys did a great job. And that's all I have for this portion of my report. Does anybody have any questions?
I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for the comprehensive nature of the report. Yana had mentioned her trauma-informed lens and you were mentioning the psychological services. How do these intersect?
That's a good question. I, I don't know. I haven't had a chance to, to think about how those intersect. But I can make sure that, um, I can have a conversation with Yana and the team and find out, um, you know, how we can work together on those two things and make it better.
It might be of use. And she also mentioned that, um, Beth Waller will be completing her evaluation. It'd be good to have that as a part of the follow-up to, I think she said, end of March will be when that's done. If we could have a, some feedback from that evaluation, that would be very helpful.
Absolutely.
The last thing, um, you had mentioned the kinds of programs that adults are involved in, the seed projects and things like that. Be worthwhile to see what more of the adults, since we really do pay attention from early childhood all the way up for lifelong learning. What are some of the other kinds of adult programs that are highlighted? Since all of our branches do a great job of attending to the adult populations and adult programming.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. I'll make sure I include those in the future reports. Any other questions?
I did think, um, Dr. Martada, to your point about psychological safety, um, and the trauma, the, the trauma-informed approach, I mean, there's a through line there. And I think- And I think if we're thinking about that on a system-wide basis, it's, it seems to close the loop. And I liked what Ms. McGraw talked about with everyone getting home safely. So leaving these spaces and entering these spaces in a way where these things are top of mind.
Okay.
So I appreciate your report.
Anything else? I'll move on.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Okay, next, we'll have the quarter four 2023 statistical report on operations by Ms. Mary Ann McKenzie.
Welcome, Ms. McKenzie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, in typical fashion, have given you a bunch of information. But I'm just going to focus on a handful of slides out of respect for your time and then take questions on anything else that you might have reviewed in today's packet. So this is the quarter four report. But of course, quarter four is the end of 2023. So you'll also see some full year data highlighted as well. The areas that I'm going to focus on the most are going to be sort of our key metrics, cardholders, circulation, and program attendance and offerings. So first up, I'd like to talk a little bit about cardholders. We are seeing slight growth, both in active cardholders and total cardholders. Not a huge amount, but still a positive trend. So that's great to see. One thing that I think is worth noting is that we are still holding at about 16% of our total service areas are active cardholders. That's a number that we're always looking to increase and grow. So that will be one of the key metrics we'll be examining in our strategic planning process with ideas for how we can continue to expand not only cardholders, but those who are actively using them every year. We also saw great online registration. That is something that has continued to just be incredibly popular for driving our new cardholders. And then this year, we saw quite a few more card, new cardholders registered than in 2022. This is a little bit because we're seeing increased branch visits, increased programs attendance, things that would drive people to think, hey, I should renew or register my card. But also, of course, we opened our Fort Ben branch. And we have done quite a bit of work with our shared system and our school partners to increase cards through those programs as well. And of course, once you get a card, we want you to borrow something because that is how you become an active cardholder. You have to check out an item or access one of our e-resources with your library card. Physical circulation is up this year, which is great to see. I included both number of items borrowed by active borrowers and also per capita. So we're seeing strong physical circulation numbers. However, it's still unclear to us whether or not this increase is increased because we're growing or increased because we're still recovering from that pandemic period. So I'm using 2023 as a baseline for our next strategic plan in future years. We really think that this is possibly our new baseline. So I'll be monitoring in quarter one and quarter two to see if we're still continuing to see growth or if we're just seeing consistent numbers. Similarly, in e-circ. So these are largely items that are borrowed through Libby and Overdrive, our most popular ebook platforms. We're seeing a slight increase in 2022 and still strong active borrower and per capita numbers. This is a collection that, you know, the fact that we're not seeing as much of an increase as the physical circulation, I think most of us are probably comfortable with it. Electronic items are more expensive for us to circulate. And they sort of, a physical book, we can circulate multiple times. An electronic book, the way that licensing works, we kind of get a slightly less return on checkout investment. So comfortable with these numbers and glad to see still a positive trend. And this is still continuing to be something that is incredibly popular with many of our patrons. Similarly, we have database access. Database access is an interesting category. It does include access to research databases. But it also captures things like the Digital Encyclopedia of Indianapolis, Digital Indy, as well as anything that's sort of streaming rather than checkout. So things like streaming videos. Those often are included in our database access, just by the way the state library categorizes them. And as you'll see, because we've done a lot of investment in these collections in the past few years, these are showing a great increase. Part of this increase is that we've become better at tracking the usage of the Digital Encyclopedia of Indianapolis. So in quarter three and quarter four, you'll see a boost. And a lot of that is us incorporating that information about access to articles into these numbers. Next, I would like to end my live presentation with some information about the programs that we offered. So I decided to focus on the number program offered rather than attendance because one of the things that those of us who've presented programs for a long period of time have tried to impress upon our staff is a successful program doesn't have a number. Like, I can't say every program should have 25 people. It's going to vary based on the content, the size of your branch, all sorts of things. But what we do know is that we want to make sure we're offering a wide variety and plentiful programs so that people have lots of options to choose from. And I think we achieved this in 2023. We saw increased program offerings. Again, this is some recovery from post-pandemic times. And we continue to see a pretty large variety. When you think about the variety of programs we offer, the one that's labeled education general here, this is sort of a catchall, I guess. So this could have things like art programming that aren't tied to digital technology. Or it could have, you know, maybe a local author or someone with a historical background wants to share something about the community. Those kind of go into education general. So that's one that I tend to monitor to just think about what's the breadth of what we're offering. And that was quite high for 2023. And of course, reading and writing, close to every librarian's heart, and also the home of all of our storytime offerings. So it is incredibly high. And that is often driven by the strong attendance and demand for storytime for youth. Any questions?
Your report gives a, a good snapshot of what is so important to the library. And the reason why I asked our CEO about the adult programming was because it tends to be put into that larger category. And you were right on point. And the adult work, of course, is so very important in terms of the lifelong learning. And so breaking that out and seeing what are the many things that we're doing for the adult learners will be invaluable.
Absolutely. And we do have, towards the end of the full presentation, I do have a breakout that is sort of these colorful bars. It will show you for the different strategic plan priorities, which ones were popular with particular age ranges. And I am happy to report that adults, you know, there's a little bit of every single one of those for them, which is great. And then one of the ones that is particularly impactful for adults, of course, is digital and technology inclusion. And that's one where we consistently see a really strong senior and adult showing.
Are those still the programs where we're teaching how to use? Because from our presentation earlier, there was a strong presence of people who already knew how to use the technology. So is, are we talking about what kinds of adults using what?
So there's two categories there. The digital technology inclusion one, that's going to be skill training. So your basic how to use Word, how to get onto the internet, those type of programs. Digital technology inclusion four, that's STEAM programming. And when it comes to adults, typically, we're looking at what we'd call digital creativity. So you already know how to use a computer. How can you use the computer to transform the world around you? How can you use it to produce something that's impactful for you? And then there's a digital technology inclusion general. And that's, you know, maybe how is technology impacting your life, but not necessarily how you're using technology to produce something or to learn a new skill. So that particular category, I think, is interesting. It has some programs that are surprising, but it makes sense for them in that category. Any other questions?
A little more detail would be helpful so we can get a, kind of disaggregate the data.
Sure. More detail specifically about everything or more about programs?
Mostly those things that are tied to, for example, you said STEM. And a lot of the folks know how to use the technology. How do we actually talk about the creativity of the technology as well?
Absolutely. I'm sure we can highlight that in our future presentation.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie. Are there any questions? Did you have questions, Dr. Palacio? Everybody's good? Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
She's, uh, next, we'll give a strategic planning update.
Yep, you can't get rid of me tonight. So we, of course, are in our strategic planning season. And I wanted to give you a brief update about the early launch that we have for strategic planning. So we talked previously about how we had multiple committees. And I'm happy to share that our staff committee has been formed. That was the first committee that needed to form to start laying a foundation to share information with the board and the community committee. So we had our first meeting just recently. And we are now at the point where we're looking for a board committee and then after that, forming the community committee. But we are on track, so very excited for that. I did want to share with you the 18 members of staff who are on the staff committee. So the way we formed the staff planning committee, we took sort of an iterative approach. We asked some closed departments to nominate members from, or the executive leadership team member to nominate members from their department with a careful eye for people who perhaps had also worked in public service. So we can sort of get a double perspective from them. And then we looked through where could we fill in gaps of knowledge so that we could include members of our public service team. These are organized alphabetically by their first names, if you're looking for anyone in particular. So we have Alexander Hampton, who of course is a technology learning specialist. Fun fact, we were hired officially as staff members on the same day. But he also had a long history doing a digital borrowing training for the library before he became an official staff member. So he has a great technology and programming perspective. We have Alexis Hunt, who is a children's librarian at Fort Ben. She's a newer staff member, but she has some fantastic ideas. And she's, of course, at one of our newer branches. Alvaro Gomez, who's a circulation supervisor at Hallville, which is a branch that has a large Spanish-speaking population. And so we felt it was important to capture feedback from them. When you think about managers, we have Bethany Allison, who is our manager at Eagle. We have Peggy Ware, who's our area resource manager for Mid-Region. And then Rhonda Oliver, who is at our Lawrence branch. You will notice that we don't have what we'd call those neighborhood branches, those small branches represented. We are cognizant of that fact. And we're going to make intentional effort to reach out to incorporate those staff's perspectives when it becomes relevant to the discussion. But we also recognize that those small branches might struggle to spare a staff member for the amount of time that this committee takes. We also have John Helling and Kim Ubers, our diversity, equity, and inclusion officer included, and a variety of other staff members and perspectives, including, I think, Nick Terrio, who is our Public Service Associate to Floater, which is a unique position because he serves at several different branches, filling in when there is a staffing need. So that's a great and unique perspective we're excited to have. Now, what the staff committee is doing is working on discussing organizational values so that we can bring to the board some, you know, staff perspectives towards how the values might potentially be reworked or shifted. I'm happy to share we did a staff value survey for staff in one of our recent staff surveys. One of the strongest things that we found is that I, the idea of right to read and intellectual freedom just resonates deeply with our staff. So that's something that we're looking to incorporate into our values in the next strategic plan. And then some of the other values, we're looking at possibly redrafting the language to make them a bit more clearer or to just resonate better with where we are as an organization now. And then we also began to filter some preliminary findings from the long-term facilities assessment, some early staff soar assessments, and some other locations through a strength and impacts matrix. So the goal there is to try and find themes in the feedback that could potentially be used to lay a foundation for our strategic priorities. So in March, which our next meeting is March 5th, we'll be looking at finishing up, looking for those themes from those community assessments, and then pulling out from them what we're hoping the strategic priorities can be so that we can meet our April deadline for establishing strategic priorities. Now, since we're in the mission, vision, and value section, I'll just remind you, I tweaked this language a little bit here. We are now looking at March for having some values in the mission and vision for the board to consider. We won't be asking you to adopt it at that time. We'll have you adopt the entire strategic plan as a whole. But just to get some early feedback and make sure that we have those values identified so we can filter everything else through them and incorporate their language into the rest of the plan. And we'll be bringing those recommendations to the full board for discussion. We have also undertaken vendor selection for the strategic plan focus group facilitator, facilitator and community feedback analysis request for proposal. That's mouthful. We sent out a request for proposal. We contacted over 20 vendors, including 16 XPE vendors registered with the city. We received four proposals backed. We had a staff committee of five members who reviewed all the proposals. And we are recommending that we proceed with a group called Cohere. And the scope of their service would be they would provide us with seven focus groups. They would do the survey data analysis, both staff and community survey data analysis. And they would provide a summary report to the various committees for their review. So we're not asking them to draft any portion of the strategic plan. We're just asking them to identify themes and recommendations for consideration of the various committees to incorporate into the final strategic plan. The proposed cost is around 30,000. There was a range if we wanted them to do more focus groups or other things. But that's kind of the target there. And then they had a proposed XPE utilization of 30% with two local vendors who are known to the library and have worked with the Center for Black Literature and Culture or have engaged with us at our various vendor fairs. I'm going to pause here for questions because that was a lot of information. And then I'll give you just the timeline update.
I have a question about the focus groups. So Seven, how, how do you expect those will be dispersed within the community? And how will that work?
So we requested that they do one per region. So we'll, we're in early-stage discussions of where, but I was looking at Southport, East 38th Street, Michigan Road, and Central. And we'll have some afternoon sessions and then at least one evening session. There will be a virtual option because we understand that that's important for the disability community to be able to engage with these discussions. And that one, we're looking at doing in the evening. And then there are two ones that we didn't identify specifically when or where they were. And one of them was required to be external to the library. That way, we could capture some people who might not visit the library. And then the last one will be a discussion between us and the vendor to try and fill in perspective gaps.
In terms of timing, are you thinking about weekends too? I heard you say day and evening. I'm wondering about weekends.
We haven't had a chance to have a discussion with the vendor yet. So that's something that we can definitely highlight and recommend to them as a possible option. But so far, I've predominantly been looking at making sure that we put them in locations where we know we have strong foot traffic and like looking at times for when there's high foot traffic in the branch so we can capture some organic engagement. And then for the branches that aren't receiving a focus group, we are also looking at during that survey push, visiting when they're offering a program. Something like Draw, visitors who aren't necessarily daily visitors in, and doing some attentional, you know, in-person, like take a paper survey or you can fill this in online, or here's an iPad, could you fill this in now? And just do some direct engagement that way. As well as we're trying to identify some community events during the survey period to visit and do the same.
Are there any other questions? Dr. Palacio?
So thanks for clarifying that on the focus groups. By any chance, are there any focus group oriented to a particular XPE group?
No, we looked predominantly at ensuring that we were spreading them throughout the city and that we were doing intentional outreach to pull as many different voices in. But when it comes to a particular, you know, affinity group, for example, what we're relying on there is largely that community partner survey, that partnerships. So we're being intentional about reaching out to our partners who serve specific demographics to ask them to promote the survey with their groups. And we're looking at doing some translation into common languages in our community. And then also to ask them to provide their perspective about their community needs.
So I know the, sometimes there are meetings from the Hispanic So I know the, sometimes there are meetings from the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Indy, Indy Chamber has that. And I know there's other affinity groups, but sometimes those work differently than regional because you have more of a, I guess you can talk about certain things that make sense to that group that may not make sense to other groups.
Sure.
Any other questions?
And Dr. Palacio, your point, I have made a note of that, and we can discuss that with our vendor. We did ask that the vendors include a cost per focus group, so there might be an option of broadening that discussion or having me fill in additional gaps.
And same with women-owned businesses. I know that conversation is very different as well.
Absolutely.
And one of the things that we've talked about recently is, how do we connect with the people we're not providing services to? Have you given thought to that in terms of the focus groups? It's like, who's not coming, right?
Sure. And that was one of the things that we looked at when we were evaluating the vendor is if we thought that there was someone in that additional focus group we were asking them to have external to the library. We wanted to make sure that they had, in this case, it would be subcontractors who were embedded in the community and might be able to bring an audience that we wouldn't otherwise have. And then again, because we're depending so heavily on the feedback from the survey, I am looking at when we know that there is an area of the city that we're not seeing high usage, looking at specific community groups within that region to ask them to promote the survey to see if perhaps we can pull things in from that perspective as well.
Have you considered also reaching out to people who work in homeless shelters and things like that?
Yep. We definitely have a list of community contacts that I have actually for Yana to review sometime in the next week or so, hopefully, to try and make sure that we have captured a large variety of social need support groups because that is definitely an area in our community need summary that we're seeing. You know, we want to make sure we're understanding what the need is and then trying to help identify where it makes sense for us to, you know, lean into that. So I'm also looking forward to the social work assessment report at the end of March to inform this process.
That's great.
Great.
All right. I'm just going to give you a real quick update just because the timeline has shifted a little bit. Things have been extended. They're taking a little bit longer, but we had space in our timeline to allow for it. So don't panic. Just know that some things that we proposed in February are now coming in March. But we are on track to continue to deliver our key elements by the hard April deadline that we had. And we are also in phase through the actual drafting of the plan. We, again, are on track to either March, early April, have the mission, vision, and values drafted so that I can inform the rest of the process. All right. Thank you so much for your time.
This is very exciting. Thank you, McKenzie. Any other questions?
How many board members are we planning on having on the committee?
I actually am going to direct you to hope for an answer to that question.
So we're, you all may know, we haven't officially, I have not officially announced appointments to committees because we have, we had a couple of board seats that expired last year, and we're waiting for the last appointing authority to make that decision. So we expect that'll be done this week. I believe the recommendation for the number of people on the committee, on the board committee, is three.
Yes. That was based off of what traditionally has been on board committees.
Correct. And then one of, one board member would also be a member of the community team.
Exactly.
So that gives the opportunity for four members to be a part. And then the other thing that I feel is really important, and I've expressed this to Greg and McKenzie, that the board as a team reviews and evaluates our mission visions and mission, vision, and values. But that's something that all of us would work on. So we got to figure out how to get that worked into the schedule. But I think I've answered your question, Mr. Lane. Are there any other questions? McKenzie, thank you so much. This is extremely exciting, and I can't, I can't wait till we start getting our fingers in the clay.
I am excited as well, and thank you again all for your time.
All right. Thank you. Great work.
And that concludes the CEO's report.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, for the CEO report. It was great information and really a big part of the meat of our, of our, the top of the meeting and the CEO report. Really good information today. I've appreciated hearing from everybody. We'll move on. There's no unfinished or new business. To future agenda items, this time is made available for discussion items not on the agenda, but which are of interest to library board members. And we invite our board members to suggest items to include in future board meeting agendas. Are there any suggestions?
I would like to suggest a report on open positions and staffing levels.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay, moving on. The next meeting is, will be March 25th at the Lawrence Branch Library, 7898 Hague Road, at 6:30. So we're looking forward to that. And there being no other business, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And is there consensus? All right, this meeting is adjourned.